Call to order, the December 6, 2022, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Pursuant to Chapter 107 in the Acts of 2002, this meeting, as well as any public hearings of the North Andover Planning Board, conducted tonight, will be conducted in person and by remote means and according to applicable law. We have one public hearing that is opening, so that one, excuse me, will be held in person and by remote means. Specific information on the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting or the upcoming public hearing can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, as well as for this upcoming public hearing, in-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel 8, Verizon Channel 26, or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town and North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. Members of the public who would like to participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to geneenwright@northandoverma.gov. The question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Even though we don't have anyone participating remotely at the moment, why don't we take role just since we're doing a hybrid meeting?
Melissa Condon, Sean Kevlin, Eitan Goberg, John Simons, Peter Boynton, and Kelly Cormier is absent.
Okay. We have two continued public hearings which are both requesting to be continued. Is that right, Gene?
Yes.
Okay, and are they both the same date or different dates?
One is requesting continu-- 104 Bonnie Lane until the December 20th hearing and Zero Turnpike Street until the January 3rd meeting.
Okay, so both those continue, both those public hearings which have already opened will be continued. 104 Bonnie Lane is continued until December 20th, 2022. Zero Turnpike Street Milton Farms LLC is continued until January 3rd, 2023. All right, Department of Public Works project update, Jim Stanford, Director. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Jim Stanford, Public Works Director. Yeah, I'm here to just give an update on our infrastructure program. I think this year, unlike a lot of the other years, we have several challenges, you know, from the COVID pandemic, worker shortages, budget constraints because of the essentially inflation. But with ARPA funding, our CIP, as well as some grant funding, we probably have more ongoing infrastructure projects than this town has seen in a long time. With that said, if I can just get right into where we stand with a number of them, I'll try and go over the major ones, hit the major topics. If you have any questions along the way, you can stop me. Along those lines, probably the first project I want to mention is the Route 125 Sewer Project. That's the extension. Essentially, it's going to bring sewer from Sutton Street all the way down to Bradford Street, not including Bradford Street, but we did make accommodations for the future if there's any will in the future to extend it. Essentially, it was funded through the Amazon project, as you're aware. We received the MassWorks grant and then funding through the Sewer Department, so essentially, we're all covering a third of this project. The major pipe work is done, so most of the roadwork. It timed pretty well with the Amazon offsite improvements. I won't say that it went perfectly, but we coexisted. Right now, they're working on the pump station. Unfortunately, this is one of those projects that are definitely hit by worker shortages and supply chain issues. Right now, we're probably looking at a completion date sometime late summer. That's about, quite honestly, it was supposed to be completed by now. They're struggling to get components for the sewer pump station. The pumps are on backorder, and the generator is probably a year out, so we're probably going to end up renting a temporary generator. Overall, though, I think the project has gone well. We did have to make some changes, another supply chain issue. We had to switch the plastic pipe, a little bit cheaper. I won't say that it gives you the same longevity, but it's, it was a decent alternative. It was available. If we stuck with the Dr. Lyon, we probably would have been looking at a year or two delay. We just had a trade association meeting, and pipe is, is one of those materials that's on backorder, 40 to 50 weeks in some instances. So we're very lucky. The other thing with the challenge with the budget, we're actually on budget, actually a little bit under budget, so we're pleased in that regard. I should have mentioned, one of the other challenges that we're struggling with is increased federal and state regulations. This is seen on the sewer side of projects. You may have heard of the inflow and infiltration. Essentially, it's an INI. We essentially have to remove groundwater from our sewer system. It just doesn't apply to us. It also applies to large developments. So essentially, if you have a development that's 15 million gallons per day, or, excuse me, excuse me, I believe it may be fif-- yeah, 15,000 gallons per day, essentially, they have to have a four-to-one mitigation of removal of groundwater. It's nearly impossible to meet that. So what we've been doing is, we've been taking mitigation funds, and we're saving up, and we're combining them with the grant funding that we get on other, like the ARPA funds, and we're applying it towards projects that we've studied and we think that'll give us the most benefit for the dollars spent. One of those is an ARPA project that we approved. We're actually going to be removing a pump station in the Willows area and upgrading the pump station in the Jasmine area and relaying some what is now forced main pipe, converting it to gravity pipe. It's been a project a long time coming. The Willows area adds a lot of inflow just because of the elevations, so this is going to remove quite a bit of INI. Along those lines of regulations, we're actually co-permitees with GLSD, where all the sewage flow goes from the town, all the town system. Essentially, you may have heard of the SSO. Essentially, whenever there's a large rainstorm, there are discharges into the Merrimack River of raw sewage. We have to be part of that permit. We have to be part of the notification. Now, if we have a discharge, we have to notify surrounding communities as well. So these are all things that we've never had to do in the past, and, you know, we have consultants on board. We've been working on these projects. We knew that they were coming. But again, it's just a kind of an indication of how we're, you know, we're bound by the same state and federal regulations as any developer when it concerns these sort of things. So as far as, on the water utility, we're also, I'd also say that we have some increased regulations. One of the things that we're seeing, so next year, we actually have to update our water discharge permit from the lake. Essentially, it allows us to draw water from the lake and treat it and distribute it. You're probably aware that we've been in a pretty bad drought this year. We're actually, believe it or not, we're still in a mild drought. So under the state, the state tracks, under their system, what they consider a drought, during the summer, we were pretty good with the lake level. You may have heard me mention before that our discharge would probably double during the summer because of mostly irrigation use. And then it goes back to about three and a half million gallons per day during this time of year. We were able to sustain the lake level fairly well. It did drop at times. Under the new permit, what we're expecting is that if the state declares a drought, we're going to have to issue mandatory restrictions. And that's something this town hasn't seen before. And that'll specifically, outdoor usage will have to stop, nonessential use. So those are, those are regulations that are coming in place, and again, we're expecting this to occur. If, if we had had the same drought conditions this summer under the new regulations, we would have had to stop all outdoor watering.
So Jim, you expect those to be uniform regulations across the state, that if there's a, if the state declares a drought, then towns have to restrict water regardless of how much we're drawing or what our lake levels are?
Exactly. We actually, so we have, we have a drought management plan, and it gives us a little bit more leeway based on what's happening. And I think what, what the state is coming, where they're coming from, is that, I mean, drought is impacting all communities. We're very fortunate to have the lake. I mean, it's a natural resource. It's probably our most important natural resource. But believe it or not, if you look at the town, our watershed, the watershed that goes to the lake is just a portion of the town. There's a large portion of the town's watershed that actually goes towards the Parker River of the Pi, what they consider Parker, Ipswich, and Essex. And if you look at those tributaries, their, their drought conditions were more serious. So we actually joined Resilient Task Force, and we're on, we're on a few state, I guess you'd say, community-sponsored, looking at the regional aspects of, of water use. That leads to one of our bigger, one of the, one of the problems that we have in town is, is beavers. Beavers have, it's, even in the five years I've been here, you've just seen an increase of dams made by beavers. Right now, we're, I think we're getting into the season where we can actually trap them. We're actually doing that in-house now. We're no longer contracting that out. But there are stipulations on how you actually can remove beaver dams, a little bit at a time. Outside of, outside of the permitted areas timeframe, you actually have to get a special permit, I believe, through the Board of Health.
Is that, and my, actually, my neighbors happened to be asking about that the other day. Is that something that, that you guys have a plan for, or do people call you and say, hey, we're having some, we see some dams being built and stuff like that, or you guys have a plan, like, we're going to go to certain neighborhoods and stuff like that?
Well, we know where there are a lot of areas. We, we see it, we see it in the calls that we get for drainage complaints. So we do have a good idea, but no, residents should call us if they're seeing high beaver activity. It's quite, it's becoming a larger and larger problem, and, and especially because it is, is impacting private property. Technically, it's not really a public works issue unless it impacts our drainage. And that's really, you know, that's when we can spend town funds, essentially, if it's impacting our drainage. By doing it in-house, doing the trapping, we were fortunate to have employees who were actually certified in it. It gives us a little more leeway. It's not like I'm expending town funds. I'm using forced labor. And, you know, again, it's an issue, it's not just our community issue, it's surrounding communities. So with the Ipswich River and the Parker River, the Resiliency Task Force is really looking at whatever we can do to help the flow in these other communities. Along those lines, one of the large, one of the biggest, I guess, goals of the Board of Selectmen is to look at interconnections. Right now, we do have a small interconnection with Andover over near the Merrimack College area, Andover Street. It's not really functional. It's undersized, so we've been working with Andover. When you do interconnections on the water system, it's not as easy as just turning the valve and them supplying us. So there's a lot that needs to go into it. So it's a multi-year process, but it is a, it is something that, you know, we've been tasked with making it a high priority. So we've been working with primarily Andover. We do have a small interconnection with Lawrence that we've used, actually, in the time that I've been here, where we had to feed them water during a fire. It's not meant to, you know, supply the town if there's a, if there's a, you know, a drought or anything like that. It's more for if there's an emergency, a fire flow, similar to what we saw during the gas emergency. There was a lot of water use during that time. Fortunately, with us, we have about a million and a half gallons of storage at any one time, provided we keep, or, excuse me, I think each one of our water tanks is about a million and a half gallons. So we have, we have about a day and a half of use of water if we did have an emergency. But what happens if there's an event like the gas emergency? So we're looking at those interconnections. Andover has a consultant on board, and, you know, in the future, we'll be, probably be looking at upsizing the pipes that go between the communities. But again, it's not meant to supply the entire communities. We'd never take, you know, empty Lake Kachikowit so that we could, you know, feed Andover. That's not the intent. It's more for just emergencies. Another rule that we're, we're bound by is the new copper and lead rules. Essentially, we've been ahead of the game in a lot of ways. We know that there are, that there are lead lines throughout town. These are service lines, not in our pipe, but actually the services to the individual houses. Quite frankly, you probably have residents who have copper piping throughout their house, the older residents. I believe sometime in the 1930s, they switched from using these copper, excuse me, lead, lead lines. We, we've always, whenever we find these, we just replace them. I know a lot of other communities will actually, it's on the homeowner, it's their service. And we kind of anticipated that there would be regulations, and sure enough, there are new rules that more or less we have to identify. It's no longer if we suspect, it's we actually have to map. We have to go through all our records, and we have to, we have to cross out. Is it actually a lead service? Do we know if it's a lead service? We need to find out. But we have been ahead of the game on that, and so we are moving forward with getting a consultant on board and actually doing these inventories. That's really the first step of it. But I can tell you, whenever we do find lead services, we do, we do replace them, at least to the house. The rest of it is on the homeowner to, you know, if they so choose to remove the lead pipe. We do do lead testing throughout our system. We actually, there are a number of properties that we do go to. We've had very few hits of, of lead within the water system, but every once in a while, you will get a high lead content, and we'll have to retest. But we don't think, it's not within our system. It's actually, you know, caused, a lot of times, it's caused by the, caused by the internal plumbing of the properties. So those are, those are definitely coming down the street. As far as water main replacements, so I want to say we have about 150 miles of water main throughout town. It covers the majority of town, but there are still areas, let's say in our country, that we don't have water mains, we don't have hydrants. About 30% of, of our water main is what's considered cast iron pipe. It's essentially, it was prevalent in the 1950s, 60s. It's very brittle, and it breaks an awful lot. So the town has been very aggressive through their CIP over the years in replacing a lot of these lines, but we still have about 30%. So we're actually, within our CIP program, you'll see that, I think next year, we're actually doing Ferncroft Circle, where it's an area that has been subject to numerous breaks. So we're going to hopefully get it replaced. Again, I think Dr. Lyon pipe, we're struggling with the supply chain, and we're probably going to see that. So timing of projects is going to be tough, but we're moving forward with the design, and we hope to be under construction this summer. It should be a fairly quick project. And then we'll continue with more of them, more replacements over time. That's within our CIP program. On the, on the water treatment side, we have another CIP program where we're doing lab, lab improvements. We're getting very aggressive with our testing. We want to do more in-house rather than sending it out, outsourcing. So these lab improvements, you'll, you'll see, in fact, I think you're going to be part of the CIP presentation that the town manager will be giving in a couple of weeks. So you'll see some of these projects that'll be throughout the projects attributed to Public Works. Another water program that we've got is we're going to be upgrading pumped, booster pump stations. These are areas where the elevation really prevents just our regular tanks to supply the water. We need the help of boosters. We've gone through and looked at all of our equipment, and so there are a number of upgrades we're going to be doing over the next few years. The lake is going to be treated for algae. Anybody that's been on the lake as of late, in fact, I noticed it recently, you could see algae starting. Typically, we treat the lake every couple of years. Supply, supply side and worker shortages, we haven't been able to get the company out there this summer. It was scheduled, and they've just keep putting us off, putting us off because they don't have the right chemicals or the staff to do it. We actually found another vendor, and I think they are actually treating it this week or within the next week or two. So we are, we have to stay ahead of that. The algae is a, is a very serious issue.
Jim, what type of treatment is used in the lake for algae?
It's a sulfur product. I don't, I don't know if that's what we're actually using now. I was talking to the town engineer today, and he said it's a slow release that actually, it's a cold, it's a cold water treatment that we have to do now. So it's a little bit different of a, of a material that they're using. But it goes down slowly, and I guess you need that in the, in the colder weather. As far as, yeah, so we'll, we'll be ahead of that, and then we'll take a look to see if that, you know, you have to stay ahead of the algae. That's, that's one of the biggest concerns that we have with the lake. Along those lines, we've got lake watershed signs that I think those are ready to go and ready to be posted.
What do they, what do they look like?
Whatever they were told to get.
We provided the spec. We agreed to it in the spring. It's taken quite some time to get them in, but this is the entering the watershed signs that we specified the entry points that they're going to go up. So they've been received and now just need to be installed.
So we'll get that on the schedule. We've got them in-house, so, again, a long time coming. As you know, 400 Grape Pond Road, the purchase went through. Happy to say that we, we got right on that. We removed the two old rusted water tank, oil tanks. We did, we still have to heat the property, so we, we installed an above-ground tank out of the water. It's completely enclosed. So, and then there's a committee formed by the Board of Selectmen that'll be meeting, our first meeting tomorrow, tasked with a reuse of the property. But I think that certainly goes a long way. Again, that was my major concern, so that's been accomplished, and now we look forward to seeing what happens with the, with the property moving forward. Yeah, I think the, the drought issue is probably one of the biggest things that we've, that we've dealt with this, this year, that we're not used to dealing with. I think even in drought years, years past, it wasn't as bad as it was. Right now, the lake level is fairly low. Hopefully, this water will, the rain that we're getting, and will supplement that. On the drainage infrastructure side, Stevens, Stevens Street culvert, which actually, it's, it's right between Stevens Pond and the Mill Pond, and we've had some concerns about its condition over the last number of years. So we had divers in the last few weeks. There's, it's the only way to review, inspect it. So we're, we're expecting a condition report, but we expect to move forward with the design and, and definite upgrades to that. And then on the, the next, I guess, system down, which is on the Mill Pond, we have a wear structure that actually has a couple of boards that controls the, it, it works in tandem with the hatch that controls the flood mitigation for the lake. We noticed some sinkholes in that over the past few years. That has been, that has been, I think they've completed the majority of the repair this week. We completely, there was some, I guess, deterioration of the stone culverts, so we've completely upgraded it with, you know, new cast concrete structure, at least on the wear and the channel side, right within the vicinity of the Mill Pond. The rest of it is actually the condo. It's their responsibility. We've identified some other issues with that, but we'll work with them to hopefully let them move forward with any repairs they need to.
Jim, how much of that Stevens Street line is being considered and looked at?
You mean as far as the...
What, what length and what direction, other than the spot you just identified?
You mean that the culvert? So we have two 48-inch culverts that go under Stevens Street that connect Stevens Pond to Mill Pond.
Yeah. So the, just the culverts right?
Just the culverts, the head walls. The diver did indicate that while he was under, he could see, as cars went over, he could see material settling within it. So it is, it's been a priority since I've gotten here, so I'm happy it's within the CIP program, and those repairs can't come soon enough. Again, this is all part, we certainly don't want to lose the pond, Stevens Pond, or, so it is definitely a priority. And then, we're actually going to be moving forward with a culvert inspection throughout town. I think, whereas, I'd say the water and sewer system, the town and Public Works has, has really been aggressive over the years, years prior to me being here, of upgrading. I don't think the same is true about the drainage structures necessarily. So we're, we're moving forward with that. We're looking at, we're going to do inspections of all our culverts. We actually have a few bridges that we do get inspection reports, and you'll probably see more aggressive CIPs within the next few years on drainage improvements. We've seen it with the gas emergency. Essentially, when we were talking about redoing the restoration, the roadwork, it wasn't just paving and overlaying what's there and maybe fixing sidewalks. It was complete drainage improvements because just the lack of drainage facilities around town. And a lot of times, what we find is, when they had a problem, they just put a plate down and covered it up. And so I'd say, next to trash complaints that we get a fair amount of, probably drainage complaints is the, the next biggest thing that we see. Along those lines, with the road projects, we're actually moving forward with contract three and four of the gas restoration. We have, I think, until 2025 to finish all the roadwork. We're about halfway done right now. I think we've done some major improvements to the sidewalk, and I think the areas that we've, we've improved so far, I think we've, we've met what we wanted to meet, although I won't say that, you know, we didn't, we weren't able to put granite curbing everywhere or do the full-depth reconstruction that we would have wanted. But again, that's straight impact because of the, the cost of materials. Asphalt alone, which is the major component, has gone up substantially. I mean, we were paying $70 two years ago, and now we're paying $130 a ton. And we're seeing that throughout the industry. Construction industry, it's, I mean, everybody sees it at the grocery store. Construction materials, it's, it's far worse, and it doesn't look to be getting better anytime soon. We are going to move forward with our annual roads program. We are gonna move forward with our annual roads program. The roads were, and because of, actually because of the cost that we're finding, we can't do a five-year plan because we have no idea. It would just be a speculation. So we put together a one-year plan that you're gonna see in the CIP when you do see it, of roadwork next year. We have been getting extra funding, RAP funding, very, and there seems to be no shortage of funding, but again, or opportunities, funding opportunities, but the cost of materials are just going up substantially. And actually competing for the contractors is getting more and more difficult as well. So we're gonna move forward with that. We also, of interest, we're gonna move forward with the High Chadwick and Sutton Street intersection. Anybody who traverses that regularly, it screams for a T-intersection and we're gonna tee that off. I, I think it was the development down there that they did some preliminary engineering as part of your requirement and we've taken it from there and so we're gonna move forward with that project and we're pretty excited about that as well.
With that, we've got complete street funding, up to four hundred thousand dollars.
We did get complete street funding, so, and again, that's where, you know, the funding is, seems to be coming in. We're asking for it, but what it's doing is it's just putting a tremendous amount of pressure on us because we just don't have the staff. Right now, I'd say for most of this year, we've been about eight to twelve percent less of staff because we just can't fill positions. One of our most critical, our staff engineer left after sixteen months to take a job in the private sector and, you know, she was in charge of our water upgrade, she was in charge of a number of projects. In addition to that, one of the struggles that we're having is it's really on the water side that we're seeing. We're short of water treatment plant operator, water and sewer tech, I could just go down the list of employees that we're, we're now competing with industries that we never had to before. And we're competing with other towns who are just, it's very difficult to pull from other towns now. So those are part of our struggles. I mean, those are, again, I think from a road and infrastructure, those are what we typically deal with. We do have the senior center project. We had our, we had our weekly meeting today. The building looks great. I mean, it's a beautifully designed building, not without its challenges of, of materials and cost overruns. It's, we're struggling, as you can imagine, right now. I, I think that it's probably, we had anticipated being open, I think, in February and now it's been extended till April, substantial completion. And a lot of that is outside of anybody's control. To get a transformer for the electric grid, it's eight weeks out. So we're all dealing with these, you know, these supply chain shortages and it's showing in these projects. But again, the project looks great. I think it's moving forward. I think overall, the town will be very proud to have that senior center. We're also involved in the Fields Master Plan, which I think everybody's had, a lot of people have had input on. I think that'll be present, presented through the committee, through Lori Berzloff and a few others. That'll be coming soon. And I think that's the majority of what we've been involved in.
Great. That was very thorough and helpful to us, Jim.
Just had a couple of very quick questions. Yeah, I'm glad you talked about the streets and provide the context of the challenges you have. How do you pick the priorities for which streets you do? And my question is, there are a few streets in town that are a little bit rugged and it's just beginning winter and, you know, I know that's reality, but, you know, if you could just talk about that a little bit and how you pick.
Yes, certainly. So we do have a pavement management system that actually tracks, we update it regularly, that actually tracks the condition of all the roads and based on budget constraints that you have, it'll make recommendations. Now, I've been using pavement management for twenty-five years. The problem with pavement management, it's very obje, it's almost too objective whereby it doesn't, it doesn't care about anything else that's going on. For instance, we had the gas emergency, we had restoration funds, we had about fifteen miles of roadway we had to repair from the gas explosion and I think we got about eleven million dollars. Well, pavement management wouldn't know how to deal with roads that we're doing in an area of town. So we take the approach where we really wanna take a neighborhood approach, which goes, which goes a little bit against about the, against the objectivity. But what I've found is you don't wanna go into an area, pave one road in that area and then go across town and pave another road. It just doesn't, it, from a residential standpoint, they don't understand and plus, I'd say, one of the things with the objective criteria, it really doesn't take into account the, the value that you get from doing a whole area. So that with the gas restoration, it's really given us that opportunity to upgrade sidewalks, upgrade the roads in that area. And we've done a number of other streets that weren't in the program but needed to be repaired. And so, you know, we, it's a combination, I'd say, really of, of what the computer system will recommend and based on what else is going on in town. For instance, High Street is a good, good example. We had that in our program probably three or four years ago. High priority, it has a lot of traffic. Well, there was a development coming in, so we wanted to time that and so we've waited. So there are, there's a lot of judgment that goes into that. The other problem, the struggle that we have is that you set a plan and prior, over the past few years, number of years, there was a policy, let's set a five-year plan. Well, we don't know how, you know, you have a general deterioration of what roads typically will deteriorate at, but you really have to see what's happening on the ground. And so if you lock yourself into five years, that doesn't give you any option to switch and it happens all the time where we'll go out and take a look at a roadway because of resident complaint or whatnot and we're not gonna be able to plow the road during the, during the winter. So we have to, we really have to put it into the plan. So I guess it's, we use a number of different tools. It's really, a lot of it goes down to what makes common sense in the context of what else is happening. For instance, Ferncroft Circle, we're gonna be road, we're gonna be doing roadway work there, or excuse me, utility work. Wouldn't it make sense to overlay the road at the same time or thereafter, a year after? So I hope I answered your question. I know it's a little long-winded.
No, no, that's good, that's good context of how you mag, mix quantitative and qualitative stuff, so thank you, yeah.
Yeah, Jim, some months ago, there was a couple minor changes forwarded or updates to the lake usage regulations. Can you give us an update on where those stand?
Yeah, the staff engineer who is no longer with us was working on that, so we are, we have fallen behind on that, without question. It's definitely something that, again, it was great to do the lake study, update that, it's a long time coming. So it's something that we're gonna have to hopefully get a new engineer in. I will say that we have, because of the shortage, we have to turn to consultants. I think we actually have a consultant here tonight who's helping us out with a, with the project. It's not really our preference, it's not the most cost-effective, but...
So Jim, I think what Peter's referring to is Melissa sent around the lake usage regulations and because she's bringing them before the SLU, she asked for red line edits and both yourself and Peter suggested some. My understanding is she sent those to outside council for review?
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Before bringing it to SLU.
Sorry about that. So I did make some comments, I think.
I think you did as well as Peter did.
Yeah. So I don't know the status of that. I thought you were talking to the water regu, the lake study that was done and some of the recommendations within that.
Any comments on the work done along Great Pond Road between Butcher Boyd Ray's Pond to shore up the undermining of the road from lake erosion?
That was a project, I think we completed it, I think we completed it probably within the last year. A long time coming. I mean, you identified when I got here, you, I think it was, the lake was fairly low and the erosion was incredible. So that was a really good project that we were able, it was in the, it was in the works years before I got here. We finally were able to get that completed and I think...
You felt the difficulties and conquered?
No, it actually worked out pretty well. We had timing, timing is everything in this world. We were well within budget. We actually extended a little bit further. Essentially, we put sheet piling in to protect and, and stop the erosion. Long-term, I think it's a, you know, it's a great thing that we did. It was definitely important. Again, we don't wanna lose the lake as much as we don't wanna lose Stevens Pond.
Jim, is there, and there may not be, is there anything that you think that our board could look at that would help in some of these projects that you're working on in terms of zoning that we can look at or other things that we might be able to do to assist?
I, I think moving forward, one of the things that we're gonna have to look at is really outdoor water use. So I think as projects come in, you really ought to be looking at low-impact development, at least to the grass areas and, and being cognizant of, because it's, I, I stress this at town meeting, the, the water use, the fact that we doubled during the summer, it's just, I, I think we're overwhelmed by irrigation systems throughout town. Everybody wants a green lawn, but I think as you look at developments, it's probably something you need to look at.
Is, I don't usually, we don't usually have conditions that I remember about irrigation time. I mean, we'll have the fertilizer conditions, but I don't really, yeah, I think that's a good thing to, I mean, one, something we could put in subdivision regulations, but two, more in our, in our special permitting, something to think about in terms of timing of irrigation and use and things like that. Something maybe to be worked into the storm management plans. Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah, and I think the other thing, I mean sidewalks, we, we have the connectivity plan. I think just keeping an eye, eye out on, you know, how connected, I mean, one of the things that I'm pretty happy about, we've been able to get grant funding, extending the sidewalk up to the senior center on Sutton and long-term down to the center of town. I, I think those are long-range plans that are, that are helpful, so as maybe redevelopments come in, just be aware of sidewalks. I'm sure you are, but, you know.
Okay, that's why I asked. All right, thank you very much and very much appreciated.
Great, thank you.
All right. Should we, wanna do Alex, wanna do that?
If you'd like to use here.
Yeah, Alex, five oh five Sutton Street, Alex Loth. Per condition sixty-seven, approved site plan review, special permit, phasing schedule. I assume this will be a quick commentary? Yes. Quick commentary would be great.
Thanks for, I assume you're taking me out of order, so...
Yes.
Alex Lotham, project manager for the project at five oh five Sutton Street. The decision that we have from the planning board, we, one of the conditions was that if we want phased occupancy of the project, we had to come back and request it from the planning board. I don't know if that's typical or not, but that's where we are. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the project, but what we're asking for tonight is, I suppose, a very standard construction item to ask for in that we have a build, we have a project with three buildings and we're delivering them not all at the same time, as you might imagine. Be very difficult to build all, all three buildings on the site at the same time, you'd run out of room pretty quickly. So we are anticipating delivering building three, the building at the back of the site, closest to Surrey Drive first. It's just about completed, I've been doing a punch list in there. So assuming that National Grid gets us what we need, which is a big question mark in the air that I understand the senior center is dealing with as well, we'll be ready to deliver that building in the next couple of weeks. We certainly have plenty to do in those next couple of weeks, but anyway, the more important part is that we're asking for the ability to deliver the buildings separately. Building three and then building two and then building one, so that we can work our way from the back of the site to the front and out. So that's, that's our plan. We have a phasing plan that you have in front of you, which is pretty basic. It's just showing you how we're separating out the site, how we're gonna separate the active construction work from the residents on-site. We certainly have plenty of i's to dot and t's to cross with the planning board and with the building department, which we're working on, working our way through those. So before any temporary certificate of occupancy is issued, we have to do all of those things that are required in the decision and required by, by code, we're working our way through those things. So in terms of the activity on the site, the vast majority of the activity on the site, by the time we go for a temporary certificate of occupancy, will be inside the buildings. We have our final code of pavement down. We have the striping done on-site. The landscaping is almost completely done. We are pouring the last of the sidewalks this week. The retaining wall in the front's getting its veneer. We're planting plants, we're loaming around the site. The site fencing has been going up last week and this week. The site contractor is actually telling us they're gonna be off the site next week. We'll see whether that happens or not. But long story short, there'll be plenty of construction workers on-site, they'll largely be inside the buildings doing the finishes in building two and building one when we first have residents in the building. I won't get into too many of the weeds unless you have specific questions. We will not be utilizing the garage and, at the first occupancies because the garage goes under both building two and building three. And since building two will not be one hundred percent complete, the residents won't have access to that garage until building two is, is complete.
So will they park on, on the surface lot?
Yes. So we have thirty-four units in building number three and when you add up the number of parking spaces required per unit, we have enough spaces in that green area there to satisfy the building department for that first building.
And you'll be able to keep any of your construction equipment and whatever you're doing out of that green area so people can park?
Correct, yes. If you look on this plan, you'll see that construction and residents do have to share the entrance, but then you'll get to a gate there where construction vehicles and workers would turn and go into the construction area, which is completely separate from where the residents will be.
Gene, in terms of our timeline that we've kinda heard a little bit about with the senior center, any issues with this going online at the same time we're trying to, you know, get towards the end of that?
Nope, we'll show the access. So for the senior center, construction vehicles are accessing via Surrey Drive. Once it becomes occupied, then Surrey Drive will be an exit only. So for right now, there's separation and this blue line on this plan shows a construction fence and so all construction activity will be to the left of that fence.
And that's actually a good point that's not shown on this plan is that though our residents do eventually have the ability to exit through Surrey, through the senior center and out to Surrey Drive, egress only, not access, they wouldn't be able to do that until the senior center is completed.
Okay.
Gene, I presume you've looked at all this potential contention between uses and the plan they have is okay and, I mean, yeah.
Yes. I'm surprised at this condition of, like, that it was put in to come back here. So Princeton Property, we handled it. Avalon Bay, we've handled it. Avalon has one building open and essentially we just wanna make sure there's a safe environment for tenants to be separated from construction. And the building commissioner is on board with that as well and so he kinda dictates where this fence is gonna go. And so the other conditions are things like certified lighting is appropriate, certify from an engineer that the site around this building is constructed according to the plan. So there's a number of other conditions that they're gonna have to do for each independent building as they get temporary COs. The final CO won't come until the final building is requesting a CO.
Got it. Does the, does the special permit require us to approve the phasing schedule or just that it should be presented to us? Okay, great. So it's been presented. Doesn't seem like we have any questions or comments. Is, are the, is building three fully letted, people ready to move in?
We have leases and we have people ready to move in.
Great.
Can you just remind me of the timing? So you're thinking within a few weeks for this building and then what are the next two?
Yeah, for the sake of argument, I said December fifteenth, January fifteenth, February fifteenth.
Oh, that quickly, okay. Fantastic.
Don't hold me to those specific dates or we'll do our best to get there, but...
And as Jim indicated, senior center, we're hoping for substantially complete by April.
What are you gonna do with snow during this process of opening in some buildings?
Yeah, good question. So our management company will handle the snow removal for the area where the residents are going to be. The construction company handles the snow removal for the rest of it. We have some snow storage area in the area that we're reserving for the residents and if necessary, we'll truck snow.
Okay.
And I think that'll be a reality throughout the duration of, once it's fully occupied as well, there'll be times where we may have to truck snow away.
Yeah, I'm surprised we haven't had any yet, but I'm sure it's coming.
We've gotten, we've gotten lucky with snow.
So far, so good.
We didn't get lucky with rain last year, but...
Okay. Any other questions? Fantastic, it looks great and excited to have it on board.
Yeah, the senior center looks great. We're, we're excited about that. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right. Bonnie Ling, okay. New public hearing, seventeen oh one Osgood Street, Extra Space Storage LLC, application for site plan review, corridor development district and parking loading special permits under Article Eight supplementary regulations, Part One, off-street parking and loading, Part Three, site plan review, Article Sixteen, corridor development district and Article Ten, administration of the Northern Overzoning Bylaw. The applicant proposes construction of a three-story self-storage facility, building adjacent to a previously approved three-story self-storage building along with parking, loading, landscaping and associated improvements. The project is located within the corridor development district three, CGD three zoning district. All right. Gene, wanna tell us what we got and then we'll hear from the applicant.
Yep, so the application has been sent for department review, however, only the police department and health department have submitted response. police department and health department have submitted response comments at this time. Neither one of them had any significance concerns. The applicant intends to connect to the new sewer line in Route one twenty-five. An initial stormwater pair review memo has been received. There are a number of comments that the applicant is preparing a response to. In September of two thousand, a site plan review special permit was approved to allow for construction of a forty-nine thousand square foot mini storage warehouse building located in the IS zoning district with the installation of granite riprap in an existing swale within the R two zoning district. The parcel has been rezoned since then and is now in the corridor development district three. The proposed facility is to be located to the rear of the original building. That riprap drainage channel is still in existence and still being used. So, that's to the rear of this proposed building.
Okay.
Evening, Mr. Chair, the members of the board for the record, John Smolak, Attorney Smolak and Vaughn, attorney for the applicant and owner, Extra Space Properties, one oh four LP. And with me this evening are members of the project team, some of whom you'll hear from this evening. Jean, if you could just move to the next slide, please. We have with us David Williams of Storage Distribution Group, which is the project developer on behalf of the owner, Michael Dryden of Allen Engineering, our project engineer, Andy Graves of BL Companies, our project architect who is participating remotely this evening, as well as Patrick Dunford of VHB, our project transportation engineer, and lastly, Maureen Harold of Norris Environmental, our wetlands scientist who isn't here this evening. Just moving to the next slide, just a quick overview of the agenda, what we plan to cover this evening, we'll try to keep it brief. But, what I'll do is provide you with a brief introductory overview of the project, a little bit about the site history. And from there, we'll have Michael Dryden of Allen Engineering walk you through the site civil landscaping and lighting. And from there, Andy Graves of BL Companies will describe a little bit about the architectural design of this proposed building. And then lastly, Pat Dunford will conclude with comments on his findings in terms of the transportation impact for the proposed project. So with this overlay, aerial overlay of the site, you see the site in the middle of the slide. And as we, as Jean had indicated, the applicant's requesting a special permit to construct a forty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-four square foot storage warehouse and storage, self-storage facility, primarily in the center of the site at seventeen oh one Osgood Street, which is about three point oh two acres in size. The site, as shown here, is bordered to the north, which is at the top of the slide, by existing vacant open space that's commercially zoned. To the site, south of the site, or the bottom of the slide, is the landscaping yard, CRL landscaping. To the west, at the left of the slide is Osgood Street, beyond which is sixteen hundred Osgood Street and the solar array on that side. And then to the east, behind the building, is a combination of open space as well as residences to the rear of the site. And so, as Jean has indicated, the site was originally approved back in two thousand by site plan special permit for approximately forty-nine thousand square feet self-storage facility, much like what we're proposing this evening. And the site has continuously operated as a self-storage facility over the past twenty years. This site involves the construction of a new building, which is located right behind the existing building. And the, as background, again, back in, at the time the project was approved in two thousand, the first two-thirds of the site was zoned industrial S, and the rear third of the site roughly was zoned R two. And then back in nineteen, two thousand seventeen, I believe, was the time at which CDD district, portion of the site was rezoned to CDD three. And again, the front one-third was rezoned CDD three with the rear as R two. And this line was purposely, the boundary of the zoning was purposely left in this location to primarily serve as a transition between the commercial along Osgood Street and the residential to the rear of the site, which is one of the objectives of the CDD three district. And so, this project, as you'll hear a little bit more tonight, respects that transition. As, for example, at the front of the site, there'll be no changes to the front building or to the landscaping along Osgood Street. To the rear of the site, the rear third of the site, which is within the R two zoning district, will remain untouched and naturalized, serve as a buffer. And so basically, the development here that we're proposing is concentrated in the center of the site. And the only change that we really have to the front of the site, as Jean had alluded to, is a connection of the sewer to the new sewer line once it becomes operational, which, as you heard Jim say, is toward the end of the summer. And so that will result in the connection of a stub to the property, and then decommissioning of the septic system, which I assume will happen eventually with all these other sites that are currently on septic system. So it'll provide an improvement from an environmental perspective. So, because the sewer stub is located within the hundred-foot buffer to the wetlands that are located at sixteen hundred Osgood Street, the applicants filed an RDA with the Conservation Commission to seek approval to tie in at the right time. So, in terms of waivers, the applicant's requesting basically two waivers, one of which is a waiver from the preparation of a community environmental impact statement, which we don't think is really necessary, it's a low-intensity use, and it's not a use that's involved schoolchildren, so it doesn't have any impact on the school. So we felt that it was appropriate to request that waiver. And the second waiver is for the need for a full traffic study. Again, this is a low-intensity use, and so what we'd have done, and you'll hear shortly from VHB, is from Pat Dunford of VHB, is our findings with respect to his traffic memorandum and with respect to the site. Again, it's a low-intensity use, it's going to continue to be a low-intensity use as well. So, with that said, I'd like to turn the discussion over to Michael Dryden, Allen Engineering.
Very good, thank you, John, I appreciate it. Again, Mike Dryden, senior project manager, Allen Engineering. John touched on some of the vitals on the project site, so I'll try not to be redundant. I apologize, but for some reason, the existing conditions is very light on the slides. They're very legible on the plans, but for some reason, very light. So, if we could go to slide six, I think, if you go the other way to six, we'll start there, and hopefully the ink is nice and black, and you'll be able to read that. There it is, perfectly existing conditions. So again, John touched on some of the vitals and some of the stats of the project, so I won't, I'll try to limit how redundant I am. But, the site is obviously a long linear property, it's three, just over three acres. The existing building that you see in the front is just over fifty thousand square feet. It's a three-story building, and it's sort of a split level, if you will, where there are three stories exposed in the front. And as the grade rises on either side of the building to the back, there are two stories exposed in the back. So effectively, one story is buried with retaining walls, foundation walls on three sides. Access to the site is afforded by a single driveway, it's thirty feet wide. There is ample vehicular circulation around the entire existing building. There's at least twenty-four feet of pavement in all areas, so that allows for two-way circulation around the building. The parking complement there today, there are thirty-six striped spaces, you'll see some in the front, some parallel parking, there's some head-in parking in the back. Thirty-six spaces is far more than what is required for that fifty thousand square foot building. Based on my calculations, only thirteen spaces are required, so it's far overparked under existing conditions. Just a little bit about vegetative cover, topography, and drainage under existing conditions. As John mentioned, the back portion of the site, essentially from where you see that row of parking to the right, is entirely wooded. That area contains, I would call it revegetating forest, it's probably ten or twelve years old, there's not a lot of big trees there, but it is very dense. At one point, it was obviously cleared, and it's grown in quite nicely. There's the topography on the site, essentially from the top of the site down to Osgood Street, there's about sixty-five feet of overall topographic relief. So that's one of the, sort of, the challenges that we're dealing with on this particular site. I believe someone alluded to the drainage swale that's in the back. Again, I apologize, but it's difficult to see on this plan. Essentially, what you have today are two components to the drainage system. The upper levels of the site, not only the area onsite, but adjacent areas that drain onto the site, are intercepted by this riprap drainage swale. And you can see the head wall there in the center. So that flow is intercepted by the drainage swale, it's carried via a pipe system around the entire site. So it bypasses the site essentially, and it outlets into the wetland on the opposite side of Osgood Street. So that's sort of the first drainage component. The second one would be the closed drainage system, catch basins and manholes associated with the parking and building. So all that flow is intercepted into drainage structures, and there's a long linear detention basin along the street frontage that mitigates storm water for that existing development.
What's the size of the wooded area?
The size of the wooded area, I would guess it's roughly half of the site, so I would say somewhere maybe a little less than an acre and a half.
And the plan, and I imagine a condition would likely be that that remain as wooded, I mean, that's gonna be your buffer, right, between?
Yes, yeah. As we turn to the next slide, you'll see, so as John had mentioned, we are going to do some work within that existing wooded area, but the area that is zoned residence two, tough to see the zone line on that plan, but it's just beyond the head wall, right there, yep, if you, yep, that's right where the zone line is. Not only will the building be outside of that, but all site work, even fencing, will be outside of that residence two zoning district. So everything, basically, from that head wall that you see to the right of the page, will remain as a wooded buffer. And it's quite dense, actually, it's a mixture of deciduous and evergreen, primarily deciduous, but there are evergreen trees there as well.
Okay.
So we'll use this slide to talk about the proposed development program. As previously mentioned, a second three-story self-storage building is proposed, approximately in the middle of the site. And I mentioned previously the grades and how the existing building is sort of cut into the hillside. This proposed building is exactly the same thing. So, the first floor of the new building will align in elevation with the second floor of the existing building. It will then be cut into the hillside such that there's three stories visible on the front and two in the back. So again, the same exact scenario. And that building, as mentioned, is about forty-seven thousand square feet in three stories. So I mentioned the building and all site walk work will be outside of that resident, the zone line, the residence two district. Let me touch on the pavement areas and parking for a moment. As you'll see in this slide, the light gray area is the existing limited pavement, and you'll note that the brown, the darker brown building is the proposed building. It's actually proposed partially within the wooded area and partially over the existing pavement. As I mentioned previously, there's more than ample parking on the site. So because the grade rises up in the back, we wanted to have that building as close to the front and as close to the existing building as possible, so that we could eliminate or minimize the amount of earthwork. So we will actually be reducing the amount of dirty pavement, if you will, that requires treatment, and total suspended solid treatment and things of that nature. And the amount of impervious is decreased as well, because, again, we're utilizing the existing pavement for part of the building. So there's only about an increase of about twelve thousand square feet of impervious on the site. So we're eliminating some of the dirty pavement, and all of the rooftop runoff will be mitigated in a subsurface chamber system that's proposed between the two buildings. So obviously, we don't have the luxury of a lot of open area here in low areas for stormwater detention in a traditional open basin. So we did soil testing between the existing and proposed building. Groundwater conditions are favorable, we were able to site a chamber system in there that mitigates that twelve thousand square feet of impervious that I mentioned. The bypass system under existing conditions will remain as it, it will function just as it does today. It will continue to bypass all of that flow from the higher elevations above the site and outlet it to the wetland across Osgood Street. The parking, I mentioned we're overparked. So in aggregate, both existing and proposed, we need twenty-five spaces to satisfy zoning. The plan that's before you this evening has twenty-six spaces. So an overall reduction in what's there today, but still, we're satisfying zoning. We're also providing two dedicated loading spaces, they're the, sort of the hatched building right at the lower, the bottom corner of the proposed building, right there, there are two loading spaces that are twelve by twenty-five, as required under the bylaw. I wanna touch on fire access quickly. As I mentioned, there's the circulation around the existing building. We did include a plan in the plan set that shows, that demonstrates a swept path for the fire apparatus from this, the specific engine, the specific ladder truck in this town. That has been reviewed by fire, and they are satisfied that the truck can maneuver the site. Quickly about utilities, gas, power, and water are all divi, will all be derived from the existing services that are onsite, so that's very simple and very seamless. Attorney Smolak touched on the existing septic system that's being decommissioned. The new building, important to note, does not need sewer. So we're only connecting the existing building to the new sewer, and the existing subsurface sewage disposal system is in the footprint of the proposed building. So that needs to be decommissioned. I touched on stormwater. All aspects of the plan, from a dimensional standpoint, from a bulk standpoint, are in compliance with zoning. Sheet C three of the plan set has a zoning summary table that demonstrates that. Quickly, landscaping, this is a perfect plan for that. The lighter green that you see around the proposed building is a lawn area. The darker green, I'm not sure why we have these sort of crazy lines, I think that's just a function of the PDF. But that darker green in the back is all the existing woodland that will remain as a vegetated buffer. What we are also doing at the back right corner of the building, you'll see the circle symbols there, there's a row of arbivites that we're proposing just inside of the proposed fence line, because there's a house about a hundred and seventy-five feet just off the right, the lower right of the page, so we wanted to be proactive and screen that corner of the building. Much of this building will never be visible because of the wooded buffer that's there, but we wanted to enhance that with some landscaping. Finally, lighting, the last slide or the next slide, if you would, please. The lighting plan is very simple. You'll see that there are five LED wall packs proposed on the proposed building, and you'll see the outline of the foot candles here. Again, the front of this building is suppressed and surrounded by higher grades. All the lighting is directed downward, it's just minimal safety lighting. Again, it's LED lighting at an eighteen-foot mounting height. There are some existing wall packs, again, difficult to see on this slide, but in the plan set, the existing foot candles of the existing wall packs are shown, and those will remain as well.
So all the entrances to the bays are on the interior side of the building?
I'm not sure if the entrances.
So if you're going to go into the self-storage facility, the doors, and usually, most facilities have those big bays for when like a truck, moving truck comes in.
Correct.
Those are all on the interior, so you're not driving around to the back?
Right, your main entry is right in the center of the building. There are, I believe, and I can let the architect answer your question when he speaks, but there are egress doors, they may serve as access as well on the sides, the initial sides of the building.
But not towards the back?
Nothing to the back. There's no lighting to the back, there's no vehicular circulation to the back, it's just fencing and lawn area.
If you could, I'm glad you brought up the house that's closest. Could you sort of show there where the house is, and also, what's the difference in topography between the house and?
Certainly, great question. So, the, yep, Stanton Way is a dead end. In the house, the last one on the right, what I did was I took this aerial photograph and I overlaid our site plan on it. We're between a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy feet from the proposed corner of the building to the nearest home. So there's a fairly significant wooded buffer between, and there's twenty to thirty feet, depending on exactly where you measure the topography, excuse me, in elevation change. But the vegetation between is tall enough to make up that delta in elevation as well.
But the, your site is higher, right?
Yes. Well, the site actually drops off, not, so our- Yes. Well, the site actually drops off, not, so our site is lower in elevation.
Oh, it is. Oh, it is, okay.
As I may have mentioned previously, the new building being located behind is, the net result is the top story will be one story higher than the existing building. But it's, again, tucked into the hillside, and the grade continues to rise up.
Okay. And the other question, just to follow up on the lighting, does the lighting stay on twenty-four hours a day, or does it go off at a certain time?
That's something I'm going to have to defer to the operational team. I'm not really sure how that operates. But I will tell you again that it's very minimal lighting, and it's contained just because of the topography and the geometry of the site.
You can see the decent like of where the trees are, back to the house on this picture.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What's the difference in elevation in feet between the front of the existing building and the front of where the new building would be?
That would be a floor height, so I believe it's about ten feet. Yep.
And is there solar panels on the roof of the existing building?
Uh, are there solar? Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if that, I think that's what I see in the aerial photograph there.
Is the plan for solar panels on the roof of the new building as well?
It isn't, it isn't completely yet, but they're, they analyze all of their facilities, so it could be in the future.
And under the solar bylaw, that's, it's a by right use for solar. So because it's rooftop solar, that would be a by right use under the solar bylaw, so, so we'll have to get you a more definitive answer on that.
Yeah, I confess, I may still have it backwards, but that's a little bit, when we were talking about the difference in topography between that and the house. Are you saying the house is higher than the building? Okay, if the house is higher than the building, then what goes on the roof of the building actually probably is relevant. Because if the house sees what's on the roof, you know, and mechanicals and stuff like that, that's usually something we watch pretty closely. So we really need to examine that pretty closely.
There is, just, just to reiterate, there is a fairly significant wooded area between, so that will mitigate some of that view.
Yeah, to some degree, that's fine, five, six months a year, five, six months a year, it's not so good, so, you know, I mean, I know like the houses near me are like that now. I can see them, whereas I couldn't see them before, so, you know.
Quick question, can you comment on the amount of, since we're talking about mechanicals, the amount of H vac units around, that are proposed on top?
I think we'll let Andy, if, yeah.
Yes.
If Andy Graves available, the architect, and he can speak better to the mechanical systems.
He's available remotely.
Andy, great.
Now I'm here, I can wait till I'm presenting, I can address those issues.
Why, go ahead right now. Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
Oh, she wanted to go to the, I've walked through the whole presentation. You want me to address mechanicals only?
I don't know that we need a full, I mean, not just to hear thunder, but I don't think, I don't know that we need a full architectural presentation for a storage unit. If you want to just kind of tell us about the mechanicals for now, that would be great.
Yeah, that's fine. Just one correction, actually, the core of the building closest to the residential is actually only one story out of the ground. The wall is only about fifteen feet at that corner. And actually tapered to two stories, as you go north, and then it's three stories in the middle of the existing building. On the roof, we have two mechanical units. And what we've done, we've pushed into the far north edge of the building, the two approximately sixteen-to-ten units. And they're approximately the one on the northwest and northeast corner of the building, and one in the northeast corner is about a hundred and twenty-five feet from the corner of the building closest to the residential. And the one on the northwest corner is about a hundred and sixty feet from the corner of the building closest to the residential. Both, the units are fully screened as well, the mechanical screening.
One other question, sort of on the architecture, from Osgood Street. What's the, will the new building be more prominent than the old building or less? I'm just trying to get a sense of that.
I can speak to that initially. The existing building will almost completely obscure the proposed building. Because you continue to drop, so if you sort of connect the dots at the elevation of the street, the roof line will almost completely obscure. And of course, you might get some glimpses of that building in the back along the sides, but your, your primary view is obscured.
Okay. And is the look and feel of the building basically the same as the other building?
Oh, let Andy respond to that.
Is the look of the building pretty much in line with the previous building, the current building? Mr. Architect.
Can you hear that, Andy?
Okay. We'll assume that's a yes.
I'm Dave Williams with SDG Development. I'm a development partner of Extra Space, and we're helping them manage this process. The building is going to be similar in that it's a rectilinear storage building, and we're using the same color scheme, but the actual design of the building will be a little bit different. It will complement it. But the fact that you don't see it from the street, and it's buried on the sides, very little architecture. It'll be a insulated metal panel building, and the color scheme will match the front building.
So for traffic, just to kind of short circuit, can you tell us what you're anticipating for traffic numbers? And the question, and one question on that is, did you use traffic data, or did you actually use how many cars actually go to the facility now as a comparison?
That's an excellent segue, thank you. Patrick Dunford, traffic engineer with VHB. We did submit a traffic evaluation, not a full traffic study, but traffic evaluation, about nine pages long, real page-turner, so I'll kind of just cut to the chase on this. If we can go to the transportation slide, I think it's probably around ten maybe in that neighborhood, maybe a few after this. Yeah, so I guess the main point, maybe you can zoom out just a little too, if that's possible. But the main point on this is, we estimated traffic, there's two different ways of doing it. One is kind of the textbook approach with the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which you may have heard about through other projects, national database of traffic counts for land uses. The other is, given how many of these sort of facilities are around the region and the state, we did traffic counts of those. So what we found with the textbook approach, if you will, on a daily basis, you'd probably see about an additional seventy vehicle trips from this project. That's thirty-five cars coming in, thirty-five cars coming out over the course of a typical day. So not a big traffic generator of and by itself, obviously. Now, that's the textbook approach. I always like to take a little bit more of a closer, real-world look at it. So we took a look at five existing self-storage facilities, one of them being conveniently enough this site. Did traffic counts of those, looked at it on a per-square-foot basis as well. What we found by comparison, the existing facility was doing a little bit under fifty trips per day, so even lower than what you'd think from the ITE textbook approach. During your peak hours, you know, morning when people are dropping off stuff, late afternoon, less than ten trips an hour. So you're talking one car either coming in or out every six minutes or so.
How many, how many employees onsite?
I think in most, you might have two to three. Yeah.
Okay.
So not a heavy generator on the employees either, so.
That would increase with the addition?
Okay, same.
It's the same staff, same office that's being used now will be to rent all the years.
Double the work. I hope they're getting a raise.
Just to keep it brief, we did also do the same thing with parking. Michael had taken a look at it from a zoning perspective. We looked at about five facilities, found they were anywhere from four to eight cars parked at any one time. And as stated, we have twenty-six total, so very confident we can accommodate what this is going to generate. One other thing we did look at, because this is such a small generator, there's no need or desire to modify the site driveway. But we did take a look at the sightlines. What we have on the screen is looking right from the driveway, looking left. And we are meeting the engineering standards for those being okay. One caveat I would put in that, we are going to be reaching out to Mass DOT anyway, just to confirm that there's not a need for an access permit, given that one was issued prior. But what we've seen out here with the roadway construction, there's a series of like hay bales and other construction-related stuff along the edge of the road. Kind of cuts a little bit into the sightlines, so that's just because DOT hasn't been able to do the normal maintenance of that brush. So I think we're at a point that's probably going to be wrapping up soon, and that sort of brush clearing can resume. But even without that, we're still at an acceptable condition, and we're just going to give them a friendly reminder, I guess.
So if you needed an access permit, that would be per review too?
Uh, no, would not.
No, not?
And the access permit criteria, there's five standards they look at, one of them being a significant traffic generator,
Right.
which were the exact opposite of that. No change to the driveway, no real impact to traffic in the area. It has an existing permit. So we're confident of that, but just to dot the i's, following the local permitting, we're to confirm that with the state.
Okay, perfect.
So, so just a question on parking. So the twenty-six spaces, is that inclusive or exclusive of the loading area?
Exclusive, the loading, two extra in addition to twenty-six customer slash employee spaces.
We've requested a reduction in the number of loading spaces for the new building from, from three to two, just simply because of the intensity of use, as you heard from, from Pat, in terms of the usage of the loading facilities. It's not, not really utilized in this, in this context of a typical building.
Is the, the current storage, are most of these spaces rented out and occupied? I mean, I assume it's, I assume it's doing well enough that you want to expand, but.
Yes, they're very highly occupied.
Good.
In the high ninety percent.
Okay. Uh, makes sense.
So if there are no other comments, that, that includes our presentation anyway.
Okay. Gene, so what do we have outstanding?
So stormwater review, we need a response to that. I think that's the biggest outstanding issue.
Yeah, I mean-
I, I have to follow up with the department heads. I mean, fire department may have okayed the swept path, but I don't have that in writing from them, so I need to follow up.
So it seems to me that the use is pretty easy, that not a lot of traffic, not a lot of noise. I think that, that the really only thing that I think, obviously, we'll look at the, the stormwater and make sure that that's okay. Obviously, you got to get, if you have any conservation issues, you got to deal with that, but just making sure that the screening and the wooded area, that's going to be our, at least that's going to be my focus. So I think that's the biggest hurdle. I don't think it's much of a hurdle, as long as you keep the woods there. Seems like a pretty, pretty smooth way forward. Go ahead, go Peter. No, go ahead. No, no, done.
We know if the butters are aware?
I, they would have gotten the normal notification, certified mail of this hearing, correct?
Yep, so they were noticed, one of which came in and reviewed the plans with me. I thought they were showing up tonight. Husband and wife both came in. I showed the screening, I showed the additional landscaping on that corner. They didn't seem overly concerned. They're, they're hopefully that-
I had an idea to talk to them directly, you know.
You know which neighbor that was?
Yep, well, I can show you on the, I should remember his name. He was in when the landscape business went in as well. So it's this house here, this is, you see my correct-
I'll remember the places that we referenced earlier.
Yep, so he's certainly concerned about lighting and screening.
And when they came for the landscaping business, there was a discussion about the, the noise and the starting times, I think.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, and, and this subdivision actually has a fifty-foot no-cut to the rear of their lots because they came in subsequent to the CDD three zoning, and so there was some sensitivity that there's a commercial use, they're coming in second. And so the no-cut, which is typically on the commercial side of it, is actually on the residential side of it.
We'll reassess that, Andy.
Great, yeah, that would be, that would be great. We'll have at least one more public hearing, just so that, you know, people have enough notice. No, I take note, public comments have come in.
No public comment has come in, and assuming stormwater review gets finalized by the next meeting, I'm not quite sure that will happen, yeah.
We're ready to revise the plans. What I did not want to do is revise and issue plans until I, you know, was able to get any input from the board.
Yes.
I don't think I've heard any changes to the plan, so we'll get that packaged up and sent over. Your peer review consultant was very good. They turned it around very quickly, so.
So it may be worth, if you can't turn that around by December twentieth, to continue to the January third. If you can get it all wrapped up and sign off, then I can prepare a decision for the third, if I get that ahead of time. You know, I need a little bit of notice.
Okay.
For consideration.
Uh, are there any members of public here that want to make a comment? Just need to check. Okay. All right, so we'll continue this public hearing until December twentieth?
Yeah, unless in the interim, they submit a request for the third, depending on that stormwater review.
Thank you.
Okay. Just, and you guys, John, did you tell them that we keep you till the end pretty much every time?
Yes.
Okay, as long as they were warned. All right. All right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, let's do, we will table the discussion later, butter notification. I want everyone to be here for that, so we'll do one more. Kelly will be here in the next. Old North Pump Station boat launch. Who wants to tell us about that?
So this is a CPC-funded project. The committee had requested presentation once conceptual plans were created. Ahead of that, we felt it would be helpful to present conceptual plans to both the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board for any feedback they may have. It will require permitting ahead of both of these boards as opposed to CPC, and so we thought feedback ahead of time would be helpful. Conservation Commission has seen the presentation. We've incorporated feedback they provided into the conceptual plans tonight. Any feedback that this board may have was intended to be received. We were going to go to the presentation, Community Presentation Committee on Thursday night. That meeting's been canceled, rescheduled for January. So hopefully, any feedback you provide can be incorporated in those conceptual plans ahead of the January twelfth meeting with CPC.
Okay. Hi.
Hi, I'm John, this is Towns Consultant on this project. Do you have the slide that we can walk through?
Yep, it'll take me one second.
And I did not realize you guys were here for this. I would have taken you ahead of John.
It's fine, I brought a book.
I was going to suggest it, but I'm like, no, we'll just go with it.
The intent here really is to sort of rehabilitate the site. The, the boat launch that's there now, this asphalt launch has fallen apart, it's broken up into the lake. The wall that constrains the site on the lakeside was originally a cobblestone, a field stone wall that had some concrete added to it above the surface, and it's all broken up too. The trees that grow along the shoreline have destroyed the wall. Parts of it are in the lake. The other intent of this is to allow better access for hand-carried boats. So here's the slide, if, on the top of the slide is Great Pond Road. At the bottom is the lake. And at, at the present time, on the right-hand side of the entrance are where the, the boat racks are, in the grass area over there. And the cars park on the left of the, the entrance. The site right now where the car is parked is pretty compacted. Water doesn't really absorb into the ground there at all. You have standing water. And boats, people can drive their cars right up to the, the beginning of the boat ramp, of the boat launch right there and, and carry their boats in. But it's pretty much a hazard. It's pretty steep, and as I said before, it's pretty well broken up. The intent of this is to bring the boat ramp, boat racks closer to the boat launch area and move the cars over to the other side where the old North Pump Station was. In addition to that, we want to install a rain garden along the roadway to take runoff from the site and from the road. So there's no stormwater features out there right now at all, aren't any outfalls or anything to handle stormwater. The driveway would be a permial paver with crushed, crushed stone or gravel. And the parking spots themselves would be grass with permial paver, so everything would hopefully infiltrate in. That's the intent. We went to the Conservation Commission, and their suggestion was that there are actually probably twice as many people who bring their, their boats in on their cars and, and instead of keeping them there at the site. And they suggested that we bring the, the ability of cars to pull up closer to the ramp. Originally, we had stopped them right around the edge of the circle there with a barrier. So one of the suggestions they had was to pull that and let people drive more closely down to the, to the boat launch itself. The key here is not to allow trailers to back up into the water. So we have a number of features that we're working on, one of which is to make the, you know, the, the ramp, the ramp part narrower than it is right now. It's going to be about five feet wide, and that will handle all the hand-carried boats that are out there now. We actually went out and measured them all and made sure we got the widest one. But we want to prevent trailers from backing down there, so there'll be, there'll be some, some cobbles or boulders in the way. And in addition, there'll be a curb step either up or down. And in addition, there'll be a curb step, either up or down. We haven't decided yet to prevent trailers from backing down into the water, in addition to signage and so forth. The proposal is to maybe reduce the slope of that ramp. We haven't got our survey results in yet, so this is really just a conceptual plan, so we have to work on that. But along the lake, we want to pull the site back off the lake a little bit, and make it more of a, you know, sort of a curved area. Originally, we were looking at sort of a block-type of construction on the wall. You see it everywhere, like on highway overpasses and so forth. Conservation Commission asked us to look at sort of a more natural living type of wall, so we're gonna look at that too as part of the next phase of design. Might be sort of a combination of the two. So, restore the site, make it more attractive, provide an area between, you know, the backing-up area, the driveway, and the lake for people to congregate if they wanted to. Bring back native vegetation. Get rid of the trees that are destroying the wall, but plant new ones instead. And that's sort of the general overview. We are certainly, you know, the site's only about 120 feet wide, 125 feet from the lake to the road, so we're clearly in an area where we need permits. So, this, what we're asking is that this is sort of just the concept that we've worked with, with a little subcommittee in town that we've been working with. So, we got feedback from them, we got feedback from Conservation Commission and the DPW. We're looking for feedback from you all, and the Community Preservation Committee, before we embark on the formal design. And we have a contract at this point to get it to the 75 percent design, which is usually suitable to start permitting. We need to go back to town meeting in the spring to get the rest of the money for the final permitting and the final design, and that'll happen next summer. But we want to make sure we got, you know, sort of on the right track before we embark and, you know, lay out a plan and come before you, and you say, whoop, whoop, wait a minute, you know, this is not what we envisioned. So, we're looking for input, any ideas to improve it, to make it a lot, you know, easier to permit.
So, I'll add that the working committee that we've been working with, Ted Kelly is here. Ted actually brought this to the forefront initially. He's partnered, the application was actually from John Borgesi, the town engineer, through the CPC. So, John's been on the committee, certainly Ted, environmental partners, has a couple engineers on the project, Peter, myself, and Amy Maxner. So, we've met fairly frequently, at least once every two, three weeks, to get to this point, and like I said, incorporated the Conservation Commission comments.
Peter, anything you want to add?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I would like to thank Ted for bringing this project forward. The site was a mess, and safety hazards all around. So, it's a, it's a great idea, it's a great initiative. I think we've had very good discussions all along, and they've been taken into account. I think largely, there's, and I think it's been a terrific job of facilitating those discussions and taking the feedback. I still have a remaining concern that I want to take this opportunity to try to express it as clearly as I can, that the concern I have had is that this site had a boat ramp into the water, the type of boat ramp that you could back a trailer down. Now, it was terribly decrepit. You could no longer do that, and it was hazardous just to walk on, so something had to be done. But I would like people to understand, the reason it used to be a boat ramp is because this is where the water treatment plant used to be. This was a fenced, locked area without public access, and the town used that ramp to launch a boat as part of the Old North Pump Station. Since the new water treatment plant was opened on the opposite end of the lake, that is now where the town has a fully functional boat ramp to launch boats, for example, for water testing or for the fire department for emergency response. Therefore, not only is there no reason to build this capable of launching trailers, but that was never the intent, to have a public trailer-launch site. The boat usage regulations do not allow trailer-launching, and they do not allow gas engines in the lake. And there's a tie between those two things. The weight of a gas engine and a boat that, you know, you can have a larger boat with a gas engine, it virtually requires a trailer. So, if there's a trailer-capable ramp, we will see gas-powered engines in the lake. That will create an ongoing enforcement issue on the lake that we currently don't have, because this decrepit ramp can no longer be used by trailers, and the existing one at the new water treatment plant is fenced, locked, not for public use. So, this very good-intentioned project, my concern has been to ensure that this hand-carry-launch path cannot be used by trailers. We've taken two approaches to accomplish that, and adjusted the plan along the way to take this into account, and I really appreciate all the adjustments. The most obvious approach has been types of barriers. So, this was the six-inch curb, which I agree is a barrier, but, you know, on Amazon, for $49, you can get small ramps this big, one for each wheel. You put it in front of the curb, the trailer gently goes up and over, and you don't even have to spend 49 bucks on Amazon, you can simply make those out of wood. So, it's very easy for a trailer and a pickup truck to surmount a six-inch curb. And I would say that the notion of having a step-down curb makes it even easier to surmount, especially on the way into the lake. So, I remain very skeptical of the impact of the curb to actually prevent trailers. I think it's well-intended, but I'm skeptical. So, the second barrier at the suggestion of John Borgesi was, rather than bollards, which, you know, years from now, when we're gone, could simply be removed, John has suggested boulders, large enough that they...
Do you mean right to show the details that you're referring to on the plan, on the right, of these details?
Good point. John, can I slide by you?
Oh, yeah, sure.
So, right here, can you...
I'm sorry.
Okay, so there's the boulders, there's the curb. But can we go back to this area, Gene? So, this is where the boulders would be. The curb used to be here, now the curb would be here. I think the boulders are a good idea. Again, the curb was well-intended, but I'm very skeptical that would stop any motivated bass fishermen from getting onto the lake, but it's well-intended.
Would plants or shrubs of any kind help?
Well, so therefore, let me get to what I have previously expressed, but I want to try to be clearer, if I can, and especially to the engineer, because I am looking for the engineer to assure us in your final design, that this hand-carry path is not capable of a trailer backing down, regardless of the boulders, regardless of the curb. That is what I meant in our last meeting, that the ramp itself should be inherently incapable of carrying a trailer. Now, one way to do that, Gene, if you could go to the left again, is to make sure that the throat of the path here is too narrow. Now, we started with four feet, boats were measured, and there was a strong case made that it should be five feet. That, I mean, I think that was a very good way to go about it, another good example of an adjustment, but I'm looking for the engineer to tell us in the final plan, that the way this section is designed, a trailer cannot get down. So, that could be because of a combination of the width and walls along the side, but that is what I am looking for the engineer to tell us, so that when we're gone, there isn't someone clever who, you know, early in the season, hasn't quite got their snowplow off their truck yet, and simply nudges the boulders aside, and, hey, we finally got those stupid boulders out of the way. I think this is very important, or it will result in an ongoing cost to the town for on-water enforcement regarding gas engines. And we should not allow this excellent initiative to have the unintended consequence of being a method for gas boats being on the lake. Thank you.
Couple of guys, do we have, do we have signs as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, obviously, signs don't necessarily stop, but they educate and make people think twice. So, I was thinking, maybe, yeah, I mean, can you, obviously you want it to be safe to walk down with a boat, but if you zigzag it, or you put some bushes in, or, I think there's gotta be ways to, to make it so it's like, wow, that would be really hard to back my boat in, because I have to do like some sort of fishtailing kind of thing.
Yeah, that was the original intent, is to sort of have the curve in the walking path, but we're pulling the driveway back down there. There are two other features we're looking at, in addition to the boulder and the step.
Yep.
Is, of course, making that throat as narrow as possible. I mean, you could have a four-foot trailer go down a five-foot ramp, but you won't be able to get a car down there, right, at five feet. So, you could back your boat up, your trailer up, and you have to walk your trailer down anyway. The other thing that we're looking at, as soon as we get the survey back, is to reduce the slope of that ramp. We'll call it the ramp. We don't call it a ramp, because we want people to use it as a ramp.
Right.
We want to reduce the slope of that. So, if you did back down that with your car, if you could get a car down there, you would be in the water before your boat would be in, deep enough for you to be able to launch your boat. So, those are two other ways that we're looking at doing this. But keeping it at five feet, cars won't be able to go down there to begin with, and...
Can there be sufficient walls on the edge?
Sloping down.
To prevent the car from getting down, or could a car simply straddle it and get all the way down?
You know, I think people are creative enough that you could probably find a way around anything we want to design. And I'm trying to, we're trying to thread a needle here between allowing access for sort of ADA access, which is, as far as I can tell from cursory review, was not required, but something the town wants to make available. And that is a maximum 8 percent slope. Right now, our ramp is a 12 percent. At 8 percent is where you start having the car go into the water before your boat is deep enough for you to launch. So, that's, that's one of the features. We do want to hardscape that point right there. Originally, I think there were two concrete sort of posts or monuments there. We could do something along that line of making a hard wall, so that would just narrow that down, right there at that slope.
Right at that point, so that, I mean, you're right, there are four-foot-wide trailers. But on the other hand, we have hand-carry boats that are wider than four feet.
Right.
So, that creates a tension.
Yes.
I think it's positive to resolve that, but if yes, there could be some type of concrete things there, so that you still have the five feet, but you can't get a car past that point.
Yeah, I think that's very doable.
And I, I would like to see, at the end of the day, I mean, you're in here to get feedback before you do your final design. You know, you're the engineer, so I would like, as the engineer, to say, here's why this ramp will not allow boats to be launched via trailer.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's very doable.
Great.
Just a quick question, is there proposed, like, hours of operation for the boat ramp?
So, there's hours of boat use on the lake already in the regulations, originally done in '86 and then updated in 2016. And that is, it's a half an hour after sunset and a half an hour before sunrise. So, there's already times of use of boats on the lake. Those regulations also specify no trailer-launching of boats allowed.
Mm-hmm.
And no trailers parked anywhere along the shoreline.
Got it.
But, you know, to Aton's point earlier about signage and regulations, I've got lots of stories and photographs of, you know, people carefully having their dogs swim in the water directly behind the sign that says, you know, no people, no animals in the lake. So, the signage has limited, and the regulations themselves, limited, you know, effect. And we don't want to get into a position where it gets to the point where we need to be paying someone to be enforcing this. We're in a very lucky situation now, where because of the lack of any publicly available boat ramps, we have not had to have on-water enforcement.
Yep. I guess, I guess the only thing, the reason why I'm bringing up in terms of hours, like, have you guys thought about, you know, just, you know, high schoolers or kids are just hanging out, like, you know, like when this is open after hours? I'm just curious, have you guys had any thoughts there?
Yeah, it's a good question.
It's no different than it is now.
Yeah.
True, but then again, you got a nicer spot, right?
Right. More attractive.
Yeah, yeah, it's a little bit more attractive, it's got parking, you know...
It's not particularly close, I mean, you could drive down there, but it's...
It's very visible from Big Pond Road.
Yeah. I will say back...
And there's a lot of other places teenagers can get to that is not visible.
No, yeah, no, sure, I'm just...
The kids who walk around with all the tans and I never want to go down there. I know.
I mean, we all know that they're gonna get in there.
I will say, way back in my day, I think this is a little before Gene's day...
The statute of limitations has passed, whatever you want to say.
There used to be a pull-off at Ray's Pond. Past that stone wall, before you go up the hill, that was a pull-off. It was a small version of this. And indeed, that's where all the cars were in the evening, and then some years later, there was a guardrail put up, and you can still see that ancient guardrail there. So, the pull-off is, I mean, we've lost memory of that, but it was exactly what you're saying.
Exactly.
Yes, that's what happened. Yes, it did, yes.
I don't have anything to worry about, I days me confused too much.
All right. Anyway, I just want to thank you again, and...
Thank you.
You know, for proposing and pushing the project through. I'm sure it's taken a ton of time, it's an absolutely great idea. Let's just follow through to the end with the engineer's assurance that there's not going to be an unintended consequence that we have to deal with for years to come.
We will bring it all back...
Thank you.
...to every board, and get some more feedback as we progress with the design.
Thank you.
So that, as we see it, other ideas might come forward...
Yep.
...and we can incorporate those too.
Great.
Very good, thank you.
Any other board feedback on the plan?
Yeah, no, looks good.
Have you guys looked at it?
I think it matches up with what at least I envisioned, and...
This is gonna be pretty expensive. I mean, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but, you know, this is gonna be in the several hundred thousand dollar range of work.
All right, Steve, good thing we're saving up at the CPC, right?
Yeah. We can bring money, see you back.
Actually, it's a, it's a good question. Are the board members supportive of my comments about assurance that it can't be used for trailers?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Totally.
Thank you.
As you know, as a resident, I approve of that, too.
Yeah, looks good. Okay.
Thank you.
You get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 15th?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything before we adjourn? Do we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, December 20th, everybody. And then in the new year.